Alright, I've got six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to thank those who are here this evening. I'd also like to thank the school district, they are actually streaming us online. If you have folks who have questions or asking you about things afterwards, it will also be available that you can view it later. It will be on the school's YouTube, I believe. Is that yes?
Yep.
Okay. Again, I would like to thank everybody who's here. I want to thank the candidates. This is why our government works, is because people like these are willing to say, hey, I'll do this. I will sign up, I will run for an election and go through this process. And I really, really appreciate it and I appreciate you guys taking the time out to be here tonight. We will get started this evening. Beverly Hicks, our city administrator, is going to go over the use tax, which is on the April. Uh, let's go. Um, we're going to get 13 minutes and then we will get into the candidate portion of it.
We moved it around so many times, don't ask me. Well, I appreciate Kim having me tonight and I hope that whatever questions that you have, I hope that this will help answer those. I know that sometimes we talk about tax issues, that they are very difficult to understand. Government and taxes, think about those two things, you put them all together and wow. You get something that sometimes you don't fully understand. So I hope that tonight, and I want to apologize, I really thought that we had a big screen and so this would have been much bigger. Um, I've been at a floodplain class, an eye closer for the past two days in Jeff City and so I was, I just actually got back a little while ago. So Lou and Kim helped me set this up and so if you want to see the PowerPoint, I'm going to go through it. Um, I'll try to explain every slide. It's not real long and I promise, I know that I like to talk, but I'm going to leave it short. I've already been asked, keep it short, so. But I do want you to have the opportunity to ask me questions after the presentation, just so that I would like for you to know. One thing I do want to say is that it is not my job to tell you how to vote at all. That is not what I'm here to do. I just want to inform you, I want you to have an educated, uh, I want you to have educated information so that you can make a choice on what to do. And really, it comes down to this. With all of this that's going on tonight with your school, with your school board, it's just important that you get out and vote. So that's really what it comes down to. So let's get started. First of all, um, I'm not sure if everyone here, we'll just start with the definition of a used tax. And before we go into the PowerPoint, I will mention that a used tax mirrors, it actually is like a sales tax, but when you pay a sales tax, that by definition, it's the point of purchase. So when you go downtown and you go to the store, you know, if it is a good that is to be taxed, legally to be taxed, then you will pay that tax at the store. A used tax is a tax that is paid when you purchase something from an out-of-state, out-of-Missouri state vendor. So if you go out, and that also includes if you buy something online. And I like to point that out because we know factually that online purchases are growing and growing and growing and therefore that is why all cities, uh, pretty much all around have been talking about how sales tax is actually flattened. For the city of Willa Springs, for, um, for pretty much everyone, uh, sales tax has been flat for the past two years and we believe that it's because of the, uh, use tax situation going on with, with online sales. And a staggering thing for me was at Christmas time, when they were talking about the online sales and that seventy-some percent of those, uh, between the 5th of December up to Christmas, was basically Amazon. And I was as guilty at times with that, uh, because it was just some things that, you know, when you, you're looking three days ahead of time before Christmas and you need something to get here, you're going to purchase it and it's going to get here. You know that you, you feel like, well, you know, you've made that purchase and it's going to be here for Christmas and you've done a good thing. So I would also mention that when we started this, we started as a big group. And I want to mention, let's see, I'll go down here, that on the ballot for April 3rd, this also includes, we thought that it would be a really good idea if we got together in communities and stick together because we all have the same issues. Uh, West Plains, Mountain View, The Rule, Houston, Mountain Grove, Licking, Poshkano, and Willa Springs are the eight. Um, there's probably more than that surrounding that, but that's the group that was involved with us. And that also includes two counties, Texas County and Howell County. So all of those, uh, so it's eight cities and two counties that will have those things in our area will have that on the ballot. So let's go ahead and start and explain what a local use tax. We know that when we pay, uh, sales tax downtown, that there is a portion of that 7.412 that comes back to the city. That is sales tax that we use for vital services like police, fire, sidewalks, streets, animal control even. And so just so that you know this, um, public safety in Willa Springs is close to around 1.3 million of our $6 million budget. That's before we get into water, sewer, electric, sanitation, all of those things. And so, um, it's a good portion of our budget actually goes to provide essential services for, for you all. And this is what I was saying, that a used tax is a sales tax applied to the purchase of goods by Missouri residents and businesses from out-of-state vendors. It's not an additional tax. One of the things that I want to mention is if, if that good is eligible for sales tax, which means you've gone and purchased that and you picked that tangibly up and physically into your hand and you pay that sales tax, that, that is a sales tax. A used tax is the difference of you ordering it online or you going out of state and purchasing that. It's not a double tax, it cannot be both. You don't pay sales tax and a used tax by definition. And that's why I already said that it actually mirrors the sales tax that you already pay locally. And that's where it talks about the point of delivery. Okay, as we noticed in the state of Missouri, sixty-two counties and nearly had involved Missouri cities with populations of 2,000 or more already have a used tax in place. One thing that I want to mention is that the, the state portion, which is 4.225, is collected. And the state keeps all 4.225. That goes to the state, it does not come back to the community at all. This, uh, the state has a used tax in place and they have been collecting that now for a very long time. And so their figures, you know, are roughly the same. Whether it's a used tax or sales tax, they still get that portion. Um, but the county, which is, uh, 1.437 and then the cities portion, 1.75, is not collected and therefore none of the money that, that comes in on that sales tax at the state comes to the communities. Okay, we just put together, uh, an example. First of all, I forgot to say that, um, Mike McHenry has actually the one that put this PowerPoint together for the groups for all eight of those cities, along with those two counties. He was part of the communications group, uh, the committee that put that together and so I appreciate him so much helping with that. And, uh, as he said, we tried to streamline it where it was very understandable. This is an example straight from one of the bills that he has had. Uh, so the estimated tax on this purchase from Amazon is 15.35. And now, I know this is really hard for you to see, but the purchase was $207.07 from Amazon. And so his tax to be collected is $15.35 for an overall total of $222.42. Now you will see what the difference is. It's because it was purchased online from Willa Springs, but it was purchased, uh, or from someone out of state. So let's talk about that 15.35. So the sales tax rate in Willa Springs is 7.412 and it breaks down like this. The state portion, 4.225, the county portion is 1.437 and Willa Springs is 1.75. And if you go ahead, we're anywhere here. So the sale price of the item is 207.07. So the actual tax is fifteen, that would be collected is $15.34. With a local use tax in effect, these two amounts, now, of the county portion and the city portion totals up to $6.59. At this point right now, that is not coming to the city of Willa Springs and it's not coming to the county. Only the thing we collected, the $8.75, is going to the state. Now, I want to say this, one of the things that I questioned, um, was okay, well, if they're collecting this amount, which I've noticed that some bills they are collecting and some they are not, so they're just now getting on board with this. But we, as a city, does not have a used tax in place at this point yet. And so that money is actually coming into the state, the Department of Revenue, and actually is just sitting there because we, we do not have acted a used tax on our community and therefore they not collected, sent it back to us. So my question is with the Department of Revenue is, well, where is that money going? Well, I've, after a lengthy time and actually contacting Mike Cunningham to get involved in this so that he could help us figure out where this was going, um, I found out that it's just basically setting in Jeff City. And until there is a used tax passed, we don't get any of that. And so that took quite a while to actually get that done. It was about three weeks before making many phone calls and even when I interrupted, I didn't understand, but I'm not sure where that's going. I'm like, well, someone needs to know. If they're collecting it from the people, then we need to know where that's going. Okay, the collective revenue of $6.59 for the item was ordered and delivered. It is the first use after being purchased. So if you purchase something from out of state, if you purchase something out of state and you pay that, that used tax, um, so when that actually comes in, it's, it's where it is actually delivered. So when it's delivered to your home, it's the first use of purchase. And these are just some of the things that we, uh, this revenue generated. It also, the sales tax also, we talked a while ago, um, it's for street repair, fire equipment, new police officers, or other services brought vital to the community. One of the things that I'm going to say is that I am assuming that every person that is sitting here tonight probably has an expectation on the city, that essential, that, that services get better and better. And that's very difficult when sales tax goes flatter and flatter and flatter because by definition, I have to use that sales tax for these very things. When they start going flat and people are, because of trends and people are actually spending their money online, that makes it very difficult. We've got two issues that I feel like that we need to address. One would of course be that issue about not genuine, or losing a revenue stream or it decreasing. But the other issue is that we have got businesses here in town that by law have to charge that 7.412. And therefore, we may be putting them at a disadvantage when we order online and we might be saving that 1.75%. What does that tell our businesses in town? Because it makes it very difficult for them to stay in business. And so therefore, as administrator, I would just say, it, it kind of brings me to know that there could be services that we have locally here, some mom and pop shops that I love and let's, let's think about G and W and Town and Country. I don't know about you, but I like that they're here. I like to be able to get up and go downtown and therefore we should support those people and whatever we can do. So I don't think, I really think that it would be irresponsible on my part, or any city official, council, uh, government should really look at those revenue streams and whatever that we can do. Now, we can't vote this in, but I want to educate you so that you can decide, make a decision what you want to do about your community. And that's all that this, that this is. This is, it is undetermined how much revenue the used tax could generate, but with the increasing online sales and purchases from entities such as Amazon, which is forty percent of all online purchases in 2017, it promises to be beneficial to local communities. This is an example that I want to show. Uh, the Department of Revenue has actually sent out predictions to each one of the cities to kind of let them know maybe what their amount would have been based on the sales. The city of St. Joseph predicted $700,000 per year to be generated by a local use tax of past. Their use tax generated 4.5, so it really outdone the, the projected numbers. And basically, that's what we've seen all over the state. When we pulled together numbers, it was crazy. And so just to share with you, what they're predicting for the city is not all that much money, it was $6,500. But if you take that times four or five, um, you know, then we begin to look at bigger numbers. And quite honestly, this is, this $6,500 or, or whatever it actually is, is not a cure-all for the city by any means, but it's, it's a way to move forward. When I was talking about essential services, people, their expectations of government have not decreased. They have actually increased, but so has the expense of everything that we do business and how we expand, um, actually increases. And so, you know, it, it's logically, you have to figure out where is that revenue going to be coming from. So if you are already paying tax on items purchased online, like I have been at Christmas time with Amazon, that money is going somewhere and we know that it's not coming here. So a used tax will ensure it stays in our community. A local tax supports local businesses. And just want to point out that if you live in the city, you will see it on two ballots and I want to explain that. Each one of us entities have to pass our own used tax to be able, for the state of Missouri, to give the state of Missouri, uh, the green light to actually collect that on behalf and send that to us. So just as well as ours is 1.75 here at the city, our city portion, 1.437 is the county portion. And, um, so if you pull that together at 7.412, you've got those three, the state, the county, and the city. If you live in the city, you will be not only voting on the city portion, but also the county portion. If you live just in the county, then you'll just be voting on the county portion. So that's a little bit tough. Um, we know as a group, you know, there's eight cities and two counties that have been working together and we know that there is a possibility that one might get voted in and one may not. And we understand that and that's a chance we're willing to take, but as a group, we have decided that that's what we're going to do and hopefully, um, if you, um, if you, if you feel like that this is important, then we would appreciate, yes, please.
Definitely. I totally support the use tax. I know that online purchases out of state have always had an advantage over local. I have this bill though, or it's not a bill, sorry. Uh, but this law is that, that last line that says if you pay less than $2,000, you don't have to fill out the form. And the flip side, you don't have to fill out the form.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was actually one of my most important points. That is very confusing. But it, uh, probably, pretty much only CPAs and accountants actually know that this is something that was implemented back in 1959. Why they stuck it onto this, it kind of gives it a black eye as far as I'm concerned.
It does, because it makes you nervous.
But you know, and quite honestly, you, you realize too that, that the state this year, the legislators have actually got something in place to take that out of the wording on the ballot, but it's too late for us. That's kind of what I told, sorry. But I'm really glad that you're doing that now. But I'll explain what that means. Uh, if you purchase over $2,000 from any one group, like if you were to purchase $2,000 from Amazon, you actually, since 1959, were supposed to actually, uh, report that on your income tax. And then you were supposed to self-report and pay that portion. Now, there's no one policing that. Uh, don't get scared, you haven't, you're not going to go to jail. We've got a police officer in the back just waiting for everybody to hold their hands up, so I'm not asking you. But I will say this, that, that that actually is, has been the law since 1959. And of course, they tagged it on this because they thought, well, we want to make sure it was transparent as, as a state. So the states are actually the ones that put that there. Not real thrilled with the wording on that. Does, is that, is that thing for everyone?
Because if it's there, someone can implement it. Even though I really have it in fifty years, but if it's there and we vote it in, it could be implemented.
Well, but it's already voted in. That's what I'm saying. It's already, it's already self-reporting.
But we're not.
Yeah. But this time, it won't be your responsibility, it'll actually be, and I'm, I'm using Amazon because it's just so easy to use. But now it's Amazon's responsibility to actually charge that to you, collect it, and then turn it back to the state. Therefore, you don't have to self-report any longer, like to have it anyway.
That money shouldn't be out there.
That's exactly right. I would absolutely agree with that. You're not going to get an argument on me for that one. Anything else, is there any other questions?
Lev, the, the tax is already being collected by the state and we just got to vote it in for people of Willow to get it.
Yes, and I'm not going to say that every, every, because the girls and I in the office at, uh, Christmas time was actually looking at that and when I bought mine, I'm like, whoa, hey, I've been charged all 7.412. Because we were looking at our Amazon and, and comparing it. A couple of the girls in the office, it hadn't been, but I know you guys with this situation and then there were several others, yeah, they're charging me, but a lot of people just don't do the math on it. Because when you go to the store and, and they, they charge it up, you know, sit there, put it in your calculator, make sure that it's the right amount. But, you know, I started doing that with mine, I'm like, wow. So that's what actually opened the question and it was that I wanted to see where was that money going and how do I collect it? So that's kind of how this all, I'm not going to say how it started, but it certainly was a question I had for the state. And when the Department of Revenue couldn't really answer it well, then I had to get, I had to get Senator Mike Cunningham involved in it just so that he could be our liaison and find out where that money was. So.
That's about, in my research, about 10% of sales. So one out of every 10 purchases.
That's crazy.
And if the state has that money, we won't get it until we vote this, yes.
Yeah, the, the legislators, and I throw this out there, I throw them under the bus like this sometimes, but they actually had a couple of bills, including not only the state, but also on federal level, had a couple of bills in place that would have, um, would have just taken care of that loophole, but they decided it wasn't a feel-good bill, so they dropped them both. And they said, you know what, we'll just let the communities decide what they want to do, which I'm not entirely, I'm not in disagreement with because at least it gives you a vote. It's not one more thing that the government is just saying you have to do, it is a vote, so it is your choice. Anything else? Yes?
Getting to the, what, what year was the, uh, what, what, what year was you talking about where this was already in effect?
Uh, website, 59.
1959.
A lot of this is going on across the state. I'm, I'm friends with some of those guys, um, who work closely with the governor. Um, it's, it's like the ELD, the 26,000 rating for cattle haulers has always, has always been a law. Everybody's supposed to have a CDL, no one went by it. And so this ELD that they're passing now is, is enforcing that, so this is just another step to, to further enforce stuff that's been in place that no one was following that, and now they're making.
Yeah, and I understand that the state doesn't really want to be the place on that, I get that. It is nice that they're at least letting you have a choice in the matter and voting on it, which is a diplomatic way to do it. Um, but you're right, it is something that's been in place for a long time, this just is another way of, is probably a way of handling that. Well, I thank you for your time and honestly, if you have any other questions that you think about later, please come by City Hall and chat with me about it. Or actually, if you want more information, um, you can go to the Department of Revenue, Missouri's Department of Revenue website and they have a full couple pages just on the used tax so that you can look it up yourself and, and actually, uh, educate yourself that way. So if there's nothing else, I'll give it back to Kim.
I think everybody maybe got a, a note card as you came in. If you didn't, you can still pick one up. If you want to submit questions, we'll also try to ask, answer some questions from the floor if we have time. Uh, I'm not sure exactly how much time we're going to have with having to see the candidates. By the time we allow everybody to speak on every question, that's going to get into a lot of time and I don't want to keep anybody too late. Anyway, so if you got cards, if you want to kind of pass them to the center aisle, that is going to pick those up for us. And, or you can just bring them up to me at any time. This doesn't look like an unwraveling ground. I'm not really worried about that. I would just ask that you all be respectful of each other and the candidates, I would ask the candidates to be courteous to each other and to the folks who are asking the questions, let's just be nice. The way we'll start, we are seated up here in ballot order. Mr. Graves is the first on the ballot and so on and so forth. Farrell will kick us off. Each candidate is going to be given up to five minutes for an introduction. And then we will start with the questions. When we come back to the questions, Farrell gets the first question. And then the next round, Keith will get the next question and then we'll kick it back so Farrell will be the last one, if that makes sense. And we'll work through the questions. Farrell, objective to being the first one to answer every question, which is very good. Okay, so with that, um, we will turn this over to the candidates.
Hello. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, uh, my name's Farrell Graves, uh, Willa Springs resident for 46 years, fourth generation Willa Springs student. I've been currently serving on the school board, uh, for the past three years. I was appointed, uh, this is my first bill election and going through the gauntlet is that everyone else here. But, uh, just in short, um, you know, we have one of the best school districts around. Um, I've been, you know, that's been a great belief of mine, my entire life, it probably always will be. So that line is mine. But, uh, you know, we are doing all we can. We want great teachers in our system. We want to, uh, provide the best for our students. Uh, we want to give them the best education as possible. We want to, uh, prepare them for life after K through 12 here at Willa Springs, whether that is going on to college or going into the, the world workforce, trade schools, whatever they have. Safety for the students is now becoming a major issue all over the country. Um, it is here as well. We're doing, doing a lot to prepare for any issues in that, in that nature. But, uh, anyway, I won't keep it very long. Anyway, I would support, we would really appreciate your support and your vote on April 3rd.
Hi, uh, my name is Keith Lee and I am a resident here at Willa Springs and graduated from Willa Springs High School. I wrote things down because this is my first time doing something like this. Sometimes I get messed up on that. I've been married to my wife Becky for over 22 years and we have three children. Our son is a sophomore in college at MSU. In West Plains, he's graduated from the high school here, our two daughters. I have, uh, Hayley, she's a junior, and Emma is a fifth grader at Willa Springs School. I'm currently employed in MoDOT in Willa Springs and I just want to be a member of the Willa Springs Board of Education because our children are our future. Children must have the literally literary, communicational, and technological skills to be productive and successful in their adult lives. We need to look at how we are teaching and preparing our children in school. I've always been active in our children's education. Uh, the educational needs of children in our community are important to me. Our school must provide an environment and opportunity for all students to succeed. I'm just really excited about this opportunity to run and I will do my best and I will study all the issues and just, I will be the best I can be. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike McHenry. A lot of you might know me through the theater guild or the Chamber of Commerce. I'm really community involved, my wife and I have lived here in the district for eight years and we have three children in the school. I've taught here in Willa Springs, um, almost one full school year on a substitute level and I've also taught in four other school districts, um, on some level of either substituting or full-time. And what I will say about our school is that I, um, my daughter was actually in the Kikapu system and I purposely brought her back here for our special education department. She was not doing well in Springfield and, um, we excel in that department here, I feel. But no matter how good the school is, even though I feel it's one of the best schools I've ever worked. ever worked for, there's always room for improvement. And we're in the 21st century. I think we need to bump things up a little bit, get our kids ready, you know, to take care of us someday. And I feel like sometimes we might be lagging a little bit behind on STEM, and, you know, certain other types of curriculum that bigger cities, bigger areas that are really moving forward with, and they're giving our students a better opportunity for college and in the workforce. And I feel like that's something that we need to do here. Also, I know by attending board meetings over the past two and a half, three years, that there's always a question of how the board can be more involved with the community or on the same level as the community. Well, I'm community involved. I have a business in the community. I have a lot of clients. I'm in the theater. I'm involved in the, well, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce now. Thanks, Wendy. I'm very community involved, and I really feel like I could bridge that gap if you'd like me to be board. Thank you.
My name's Mac Jim. I have been in Willow Springs, I think, around 43 years. I came here for the spring of 1975 and did my student teacher degree. And things just continued, and they haven't gotten that immunity for the next 31 years. And so, I finished my career. I taught and coached for 13 years, two years in middle was at Richards, R5, near West Plains, as an assistant principal and coach. Then I came back here as the middle school principal for my last 18 years. My wife, Pinky, and I have two boys that went through the school system here, Michael and Steven. At least they're not both living at home now. And, you know, I'm running for school board, because I'm a real proponent of public education. I come from a rural area, Alton. And I know that public education is the best chance that many of our students have to, to get out there and live a productive life and fulfilled life. They just don't have the chances that others might have in other areas. The best predictor of a student's success in school is their parents' education. And whenever you have to fill a gap, it takes special people, like we have in our school, to, to fill that gap that sometimes exists whenever parents don't have the background that you wish they did. Anyway, last thing I might say, that in the current political climate, I see public education being attacked. And it seems like some of our resources are trying to be drawn away from public education. And I, I would like to work to maintain what we have and, and keep public education as the forefront of people's minds.
Hello, I'm Jackie Kimbrough. I've been a resident of Willow Springs most of my life. We've had a few years we moved back. I moved back because this is where I want to raise my family. This is home, and I'm very passionate about our community. I'm very passionate about our school system. My daughter Zoe is a sophomore in high school here in town. And I've got our almost three-year-old little boy, who will also be over here in just a couple of years. We're excited about that. I'm very, as I said, I'm very passionate about our school system. I grew up in it. I think I know it pretty well, at least from the time that I grew up in it and from the time that I've been a mother of a child in the system. And I think we have a very good school system. That's why, that's why we're here. That's why our kids go to school here, is because we have such a good school system. And I just want to, I want to be on the board, because I want to help to continue to improve that. I think, I don't think our school system is broke, but I think that there's always room for improvement. We can always make our school better. We can always be, you know, looking for better education possibilities. STEM is one of the big ones right now that everybody's looking at and going to. And I think that there's a lot of things that we can be looking at and trying to decide if that fits with our school, if that fits with our community, and how we can prepare our kids better for their future. You know, a lot of kids, I don't know that they leave school really knowing what they're going to do with their lives. And so I think if we can work harder as we raise these kids and, and push them through school, that we can better prepare them for their future, whether it be going through a vocational program, or going to college, or going straight into the workforce. If we can prepare them for that, we can have a better society and our community can, can thrive better. I work in a business that employs a lot of people, and I see the people that come through there, and I think, gosh, I wish they had this training or that training. And so I think there's a lot of things that we can, we can do to build on what we already have. And so that's why I want to be on the board.
Thank you all so much. We still have time. If anybody has a note card, if they would like to prevent the questions, I have a list of a few questions here that I'll go through first. If anybody still wants to go out and get a card, we still have time. Pull that. I think we've answered a lot of the questions that I had just at the beginning, which were what we do, and why we work for the school, and all that kind of stuff. So we're just going to jump right in here. What do you all think is the most important issue facing our whole education right now? Start again with Mr. Graves and work down the road.
I would have to say, one of the biggest, or some of the biggest issues that we will face, and I did say this earlier, is going to be safety for our schools, safety for our children. The other thing is funding, whether that's state, whether that's federal. You never know with politics and everything today where that's going to lead you. The other thing is technology. Technology advances more and more and more and more. Our kids are so technologically advanced now. Anyway, you know, it's always going to be kind of a hard issue for the school systems as a whole to keep up with that. And as a board member, you know, it's our job to kind of filter out all that and kind of put the things in place that we can to, to increase the betterment for our, for our kids in that situation.
I think getting, the most important thing to me is to get these kids ready for the workforce, get them ready for the trade school, or college ready, you know. We have a lot of issues. Like Farrell said, there's the safety, the safety in our school, I think, excels. Been going through the school board meetings for a little while, kind of watching the, what's going on. And I believe we are heading in the right direction. So the STEM program, I'd like to see the kids get excited. And, and that was always a great subject of mine, science and technology. And I always liked to see how things work. And I'd like to, I think that's, that's the most important thing, is just to challenge the kids and make them enjoy going to school.
I think probably the biggest thing is going to be the budget. The budget controls just about everything. From transportation to nutrition, to faculty, insurance, everything. And if that budget is not taken care of properly, and funds aren't allocated properly, we will never have STEM. We will never have safety. We won't have any of those things. So we have to make sure that the budget is in order, and that that's taken care of properly. And I kind of ran on a different platform last time, but I think we need to have a little bit of transparency and some accountability, too, for our administration. And I've kind of moved away from that a little bit. We've had some changes in the last couple of years that remedied that. But I believe that that could be like a secondary thing. And I think as long as, like I said, the funds and the budget are allocated properly to expansion, improvements, maintenance, nutrition, everything is going to fall under that budget. And we need to make sure that your guys' money, the bond money, any kind of money we get from the federal or the state government, is spent properly, and for the best interest of our students and then our faculty.
I'd have to agree that my budget is a priority. Without funds, you're not going to be able to accomplish the things you need to accomplish. Because, you know, safety is a course of priority. And I, like Keith, have attended a couple of school board meetings, and where they, it's evident that that's a focal point. And officer board is a great asset to the school, and planning for school safety is continuing. So preparing kids for well, we're in the 21st century. But the future is, is big. I'm not a Betsy DeVos fan, but she made a point of talking about how schools are somewhat still look like they did 100 years ago. And there's a little bit of truth in that. She got a lot of flack on that from a lot of good teachers who pointed out that they were doing things totally different than they were 100 years ago. But the point is, is we're preparing kids for a future that we really don't understand. And they've got to be ready in thinking the old, outside the box. And prepare kids for that.
I believe that the, preparing our kids for their future is probably the biggest challenge that we have ahead of us. Getting our kids ready to go into the workforce, go into college, go into trade school, whatever they want to do with their lives, helping them to even know what they need to do with their lives. Helping them to figure out what career would best fit them. You know, sometimes kids go off to college, get a degree, and start the job, and realize that they are not at all suited for that job. So then you see people going back to school and back to school. And I think we can do a better job of pushing them in the right direction, helping them what's going to fit them, and what's going to make them successful in life, so that, you know, 20 years down the road, they're not sitting there going, oh my goodness, why did I become an engineer? I hate this. I should have done this, or I should have done that. And so I think by helping our kids get a clear view of where they should go with their lives, we can have kids that come back to our community and are good citizens, and they are involved in the community, and they are bringing business to Willow Springs, and they are bringing jobs to Willow Springs, and things that can build our town and continue to help us to grow as a community, not just stay or rap. And so I think by helping our kids to figure out where they need to be in life, and where they need to be going, and what education avenues they need to pursue, we can build a better community on that.
Thank you all. Does anyone want a card? Or do you want to wait until we have kind of a free-for-all in a few minutes? Okay, all right, we'll keep going. Okay, Mr. Lee will be answering the question first on this next one. And this is a really open-ended one. I'll hold you up just a little bit more time, because it's actually a two-part question. What do you see is the greatest strength of our school district, and what do you see as our greatest area of improvement? Again, that's kind of a loaded question. So I'll get, I'll hold you up a little bit more time.
I think the greatest strength of our, our school is our teachers. We have a very good teaching staff. And they, they do, they do everything they can with what limited resources we give them. And they... Lost my train of thought. And I, what's the second question? What's the greatest area of improvement?
Well, is there something you see lacking, you know, the area, the area that stands out most that needs to be improved in the past?
The greatest area of improvement would be getting the curriculum lined up between fourth and fifth grade, because the kids, they go from fourth to fifth, and then they're, they go into the block system, and they're, they're lost. And then the transition from eighth to ninth, they're just kind of floating along there. And we need to get that all aligned and, and make it better.
I think the greatest strength that we have in our school is our special education system, our department. I worked a lot in special education before I moved to art and started teaching art. And we have two special needs children, and one started here in second grade. She'll be going into ninth grade, too, this year. And like I said, I moved her back to this school system simply for that. I think that's the, that's the biggest strength the school has. We do have good teachers. We can always get more teachers that are better, more advanced teachers, teachers that are going to get us to move on. That kind of leads into the weakness. The weakness is that we are stuck like in the 90s here with our block system, with the transition periods, things of that nature. What about our gifted program? What happens to that after fourth grade? Where is it? You know, we got smart kids, and what's happening to them once they get into high school? They have a senior project their last year of high school, and that's it? You know, there's, there's things of that nature that we could improve on. And obviously, preparing them for the future, that's what everyone keeps saying here. Well, then that's, that's what needs to happen. We need to allocate funds properly, so that we can implement STEM. Let's start the elementary school. Let's get them going on that. You could get STEM labs. When we first started talking about this, they were about 25,000. Now I think they're up to about 34,000. That's still not a lot of money. That would get the entire elementary school started. And I feel like that's where we need to improve, to get, get our kids up to date with their learning, and prepare them for the real world, whether they decide to stay here, go to college, come back, move to Texas, California, Philadelphia, wherever. Let's make sure they're ready for that, and that they're successful no matter where they go.
While I was principal, we had a lot of students, or a lot of parents move their students, their kids, in our district simply because of our special ed departments. And that is a major strength, has been and continues to be. I would have to say that the greatest strength, which special ed, certain part of it, is the people, not just the teachers. We've had great faculty, we've had great administration, we've had fantastic support people. The people, the bus drivers that meet those kids every day, the first person we see, many of them. The food service personnel, the custodians, the maintenance people, everybody works extremely... works extremely well together as a team. I feel like that's what makes our school as good as it is. And as far as, you know, what I'd like to see improved, well, you know, one of the goals for, what goes to continuous improvement. And I think that preparing kids for today's world is, and tomorrow's world, is what we really need to work on. We tend to want to put everybody in one box and, and hope that everybody's going to go to college. And we know for sure that that's not going to happen. And, and there's a lot of kids that have, have strengths outside of the academic world that, that you know, you need when you're going to college. And, you know, finding ways that those kids can, can grow those strengths and, and get out in the world and utilize those strengths is what we really need to work on way more. There's a lot of great jobs out there that don't require a college education. And, and, you know, getting kids and encouraging kids to, to seek what, whatever area it is that they have strengths and passion about.
When I read this question initially, that was my first thought too, is, is the employees, the teachers, special... ...central, we've been through several years of school here and, and seeing the teacher do tutoring and, and entering, you know, this class or that class and spend extra time. And so I really believe we have very good teachers. Being a small community, a lot of our teachers here, they went to school, they're raising their children here. And so they're not just educating our kids, but they're educating their own kids. They truly are best... ...because their preferences can... ...to have an education. And so I think our, our teachers are so, so invested that that is one of our greatest strengths. Weaknesses, I think, kind of goes back to the first question again of, of the area of improvement. And that is, you know, that we've got to get them pointed in the right direction, make sure that they get where they need to be for, for the rest of their lives.
Well, now I don't know which is harder, going first or last. I'm kind of in the no win scenario. I do agree with, with everything everybody has made, you know, very, very valid points. I do not disagree with any of those. Our special needs department is, is very outstanding. Like I said, people do, they come from all over, new enrollments every semester. It's growing at a great demand. Our, our strengths are truly our teachers. We have great, we don't have good teachers, we have great teachers. You know, you can judge that in your workplace. You know, maybe how well your kid does in school or whatever. But our teachers, I think what makes sense a bit that I have learned the last few years, and this is kind of an eye-opener, when I went on the board, maybe I went on for reasons that I wasn't sure about, but you, you learn really fast while you're there and what you're doing. Our teachers stick together. Our teachers are there for not only our kids, they're not only there for our communities, they're there for each other. And that comes from the group that they have up there, from our superintendents to our building principals, assistant principals. We have a very, very, very great administrative team up there. You know, it, it is just outstanding. Being a student and being involved with teachers from a school board perspective is way different. I'm sure that Coach Colley and Mr. Gumbo, they can attest, I probably wasn't the best at the, at the first part of that. But not only our school system, what we do excel at at our school and one of our great strengths is, is our students as well. You know, they're, they're being brought into the system from elementary all the way to graduation. And not only just the major classroom stuff, the, the math, the science, the, you know, music, all that. But, you know, you look at some of our clubs, our SEC LA, our FFA, our FBLA, our band, these are groups of our students. They're winning awards all the time. I don't know if, you know, the... You know, Mike goes back to the students and to the teachers. Our sports programs, you know, they do great things. We've got players named to the conference, to the district. And all that comes from the educators. Improvement, you know, it's been an ongoing thing, like Mike said, for the last three years, community engagement, community... Before we move further as a school district, we have to get the community involved. We're down with two or three failed bond issues. We have to get the community on board with that. We have buildings that are old. Like I said, I'm a fourth generation student, one of those buildings up there, I think my great grandmother was a school member. You know, those times are coming where we're going to have to expand. We can't have the classrooms that we've had 100 years ago. The community's going to have to make that happen. It can't be any two, well, I guess any two of us five up here. I mean, it's got to be the community as a whole that makes that decision. We've heard a lot about STEM, we've got to get STEM going. Everybody in here, do you know what the acronym for STEM is? Maybe, maybe not. It is a hands-on learning experience in the classroom in science, technology, engineering, and of course, most important, mathematics. Where we get the students in there, you know, Mike made a comment about echo, this is something where the gap can go. When we get STEM in the middle school and the high school and, you know, and it's not just for select, you, you know, it can be for everybody that, you know, academically is up to the challenge, that can get in there and, and take part in that. So that's it.
Thank you all. Okay, my next question, actually, there's one that an audience member submitted that really dovetails with the next question that I had. And I apologize, this is a lady question. My question was, how safe are our schools and what can be done to improve? Our audience question was, a lot of schools I hear are getting away, oh, that's blocked schedule, I'm sorry. How do you feel about school systems training and arming some teachers as a mechanism of adding to the safety in our children? So we'll add in with school safety, how do we feel about arming teachers or sort of staff members?
Okay, first part of that question, our school has better security than a lot of schools. Like I said, I've subbed in quite a few different school districts, worked full-time in two different school districts and belong with private school. And in most of those schools, you can walk right in that front door. You don't have to be buzzed in. Fortunately, we have that here. In the elementary, you have a best school that you have to go through, or you have to go through a send you know, so you let that happen very easily. So, security-wise with Officer Moore and, and our, our door buzzers and things like that, I think that helps. It can always be approved and proved upon, which leads to the second part of the question. If we did have armed teachers, obviously, if they have proper training, if they have a proper background and maybe anonymously are in there and are armed, that's just going to deter anybody that knows that that's going on in the school. Now, that's just, that's my personal opinion. Obviously, it's going to be a problem to some people. But I was just watching on Today this morning, Dora was on national news this morning because they have armed teachers in our school. And first thing I heard was South Central Missouri and armed teachers in the school and perked up and I looked. I don't normally watch the Today Show. I was at physical therapy and that's what was on the TV. But, but I mean, I was, I was actually kind of shocked that Dora made national news. Now, that's not the only school. There's, there's, I think there's about 12 states that allow that to happen already. Missouri's one of them. And we have more than one school around here that does that. They don't publicize it as much, but I feel that that would really secure it. Even if somebody did reach through, get through the back door, one of the kids opened the door and let them in, or if it was a kid themselves that, you know, came in. I personally feel the only way to, and we had, we had active shooter training when I was teaching too. The only way to really stop that, you know, that's the fight or flight thing. And if you're going to hide behind a door and stack a bunch of desks up and hope that guy doesn't get through, I mean, that's okay. But if you're there and you can take him down and save 17 people's lives, I'm all for it.
I'm not sure where to start here, but like I said a while ago, I do think that our school has a good handle on, on school security. They continually plan for, for school safety. I think we couldn't be better off than having Officer Moore in place. With that said, there's always, you know, something else to, to do. I feel like the very most important things having to do with school safety is, is first is the relationships between teachers and students and parents and the community. Every, every student needs a belt that is close to them and that knows them well. And, and at the same time, as, you know, just as important as good relationships is an awareness, everybody, including students, needs to be aware of their surroundings and aware of who's coming in the door, of where, who's walking across the school grounds. And I think by and large, our school does a good job of that. I'll, I'll give you a good example here. I sub at school occasionally whenever we're really desperate for help. And a few years ago, I can say four, five years ago, I was going into the middle school this summer and I was following a teacher in that I didn't know and she didn't know me. And we were going to go in the side door, at least I thought I was going to go in the side door. And she turned and looked at me as she started going in the door and she says, can I help you? And I said, well, I'm, I'm here this summer. And she says, well, I think you need, you know, she looked at me and I had a backpack and I was like, she, she did her job. And she said, I think you need to go around to the other door and get the buzz down. We need people like that. We need people that are constantly aware of what's going on. As far as arming teachers, I'm not comfortable with that. I think teachers have enough to do with the job that they have. Dora, Glenn Wood, some other rural schools are in different situations than we are here in Willis Springs. We've got local law enforcement that's, that's close. We've got highway control, district headquarters here in town would be there immediately. Officer Moore talked about this the other night at the board meeting and there may be certain circumstances where having someone else on campus armed is a possibility, but it would take an extreme amount of training for that person to be ready to, to fulfill that role.
School safety, I, I feel very comfortable with my, my children in the school system. I'm not, I'm not worried about their safety when they're there. We've done, we've, we've done some training with, with Officer, Officer Moore through our church and stuff. We are so fortunate as a school system to have somebody with his background and training there in the school, taking care of the school. I know he's, he's said before that he can be from one side of the campus to the other in like two minutes or less. I feel very, very, very fortunate that we have him there. I think our teachers go through a lot of really great training. I think we do a really good job in that area, you know, from, from how he buzzed into the buildings to the, the training they go through, the steps that the individual teachers take in their own classrooms. If you go into some of the classrooms, you'll see things that, that you kind of go, huh, I wonder why there's, why that's there? And if you ask them, it's, it's part of that. You know, it's, it's their preparedness for if this happens, I have this already ready to go and I can secure my door, or I can secure this, or I can do this with my students. And so it's, it's top of mind awareness with our, with our teachers and our staff at the school. And I think that's really a key part to the safety of the kids and of the school. As far as arming our, our teachers, I believe that with proper training, as Matt mentioned, extensive, extensive training, there's some really great programs even around here that, that train, train teachers to carry in the school. And I think that with the proper training, it can be a very good thing. I think it also needs to be teachers that volunteer for this. I don't think it should be a, hey, you, we need you to do this. It's, it's got to be something that they're ready for, that they're comfortable with. And so, you know, in the right circumstances, with the right training, then yes, I would be, be okay for that.
Well, I hate to beat the dead horse, but Officer Moore is, you know, he is the, it's just phenomenal, the training and expertise that this guy has and the systems that he has put in place at our school already. I mean, you know, we are well, I think we're well ahead of the curve. You know, it is hard to get up there. When you have a child that leaves something at home at least four days a week, it's hard to get in there and get the wood in. But, and, and that's a good thing. You never cry about something. Unless you're late or golf or something. As far as, you know, we do have a lot of systems in place and there are systems that, you know, we probably can't divulge to the public because we don't want people to know. But there are systems there that, you know, I, you know, I don't lose sleep over, over it that I, but as far as the arming of the teachers, you know, that's a, that's a real sticky, sticky thing for me. With my profession, I get to come in after all that's over. And what you could have and what you end up with can be devastation. Putting teachers in that situation, and I think Jackie said that and probably a couple others, but I think the misnomer that you hear all over social media and the news that, you know, give the teachers books, not guns. Well, of course, we're giving the teachers. We're not going to give the teachers guns. The teachers would have to want that job. They would have to want that responsibility. You know, am I going to take a 30-year teacher that's getting ready to retire and tell her now she's going to police the front door with a concealed carry pistol? That's, you know, that's not what's going to happen in any school system. I know with the school system in West Plains, that's where I work at with the ambulance system and we know that, you know, it is a, it, it will take a special teacher that wants that job. And if we do come to that and we do have the teachers that want that and that are willing to put in every minute of that training and stay with that training and continue the education on that training, I would be for that. But as far as just volunteering teachers and, you know, you now you're the protector of our children, no, that's not.
of our children, no, that's not.
Just like about everybody else said, Glenn is, he is just great at everything he does. I saw the passion the other day whenever he was giving the presentation in the school board meeting. He is prepared, he goes to trainings and he is, he is on top of everything. And there ain't much more that I could say other than give him all the tools and the resources he, he needs because he's got it figured out. And as far as having guns, teachers armed with guns, they would have to be trained, but the teacher's main responsibility is to protect the students that they have. And we wouldn't want any of them leaving their stations to go do things. I, I feel that if it's somebody that's, that's ready for it and not, doesn't have the responsibility of the class at time and they, they are carrying, then yes, they can, they can leave. But at least that's not what they do, they need protecting.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to the next card that I started to read a minute ago. It says to do with block scheduling. The person who's in the audience basically says that a lot of districts are moving away from block scheduling. What is your opinion? Do you think we need to change?
That's funny that came to me, uh, the one first because I was involved in implementing block scheduling. I was a strong proponent of it then and I still think it has a lot of strengths. The strengths that it has is probably the most important thing was in middle school, we were able to schedule common planning time for, for a great level of teachers. So generally speaking, all of the seventh grade teachers would have a planning time that, with all of the other seventh grade teachers. And they could then plan together a lot of the things they did in the classrooms. And that benefited kids, you know, they had in common. It also became very easy for them to, to talk about the student because generally if the student is having a problem with one class, then they probably have a problem with another class. Or, you know, one class, then another teacher maybe had a different relationship with that student could suggest something that might help. But just, just the collaboration between teachers was, was a strength of it. The 90-minute period as opposed to 50-minute period, in a 90-minute period, or in, in any class, you have a certain amount of time that's used for startup and start, a certain amount of time that's used for shutting down the class. And, and if you only have that once every other day, you have more instructional time in between. And, you know, the, the requirement for block schedule is that teachers had to adjust. They had to change their teaching strategies. You cannot stand up and lecture or talk to students for 90 minutes as opposed to 50 minutes. You shouldn't even do it for 50 minutes, especially at the middle school level. But, but it required teachers to, to develop activities that were, were, they were constantly doing something different in each class. And many teachers adapted very well and developed routines that, that fit very well with the block schedule, allowed them to do activities that, let's say, projects that required more time and, and were able to get more in depth in, in one, one class period than they were in the fifth period. Some teachers did that very well, some did not. And, you know, the goal was to try and help those that had a harder time adjusting to become more comfortable with, with block. And by and large, most did. But that is a, a, a point that constantly has to be brought to awareness is are we doing things in that 90-minute period based on sound educational practices? You know, middle school kids especially don't have a very long attention span. So, so you need to change the activity several times throughout that period. Homework is always a question about block schedule because kids have an extra day in there, are they gonna forget to do their homework and, or are they gonna utilize that extra night, that extra time to get their homework done? Well, basically what, what I found was that the kids didn't do their homework before, didn't do their homework after, you know, when we went to the block. Things didn't change a whole lot as far as that goes. Some did utilize it to, to their benefit, especially those that were involved in extra curricular activities. You know, perhaps they had a, a bowling or something like that and couldn't, couldn't get their homework done or they had that extra night to get it done. But again, it just goes back to doing business to, and, and to the end of the teachers. So as far as block scheduling goes, I'm a proponent of it. I, you know, there are ways to help kids adjust to it whenever they move from fourth grade to fifth grade and fifth grade to sixth grade and so on. There's those transitions at each grade level. But I can also see the, the benefits of going to a seven period day. Probably Mr. Hall, his greatest reason to, to go to that is, is money. It costs a little bit less to, to, to have a, a seven period day that does block scheduling, just simply because of numbers and personnel involved.
I, I was a student in the middle of the transition from a seven-hour day to block scheduling and I remember it very vividly, making that, that transition, being in a, you know, I think, I think it happened in my sophomore year that we went to the block scheduling. And I remember going a year of high school on, you know, seven hours a day. And then I remember the next year being on that block scheduling and, and it was, as Mac said, it was a transition. One of the things that I see as a huge advantage of it is, as, as a student, we were then able to get eight credits and get eight classes a year instead of, instead of seven. As we started, you know, we were preparing for college and trying to get all those classes in that we needed, that, that the colleges that we were going to go to would need us to have, it became much easier to get those classes in when we had an extra class every year that you could take. I also see a lot of advantages to, to the seven-hour day. And so I really think it's one of those things that, you know, if I'm elected to the board, I'll wanna really talk to the teachers, talk to the administration, talk to people in the community, students, and get a good feel for what the pros and cons are to everybody and, and try to figure out what's gonna be the best decision for the school and for the students, not necessarily in my own personal opinion. I, I, you know, I could go either way on it. And so I think the best answer I can give is, is that I would just reach out to the community and reach out to the students and teachers and find out how they feel about it and go from there.
I, I have to agree with Jackie on that. Not being a student who has been in the block scheduling, but having children that were part of it, as trying to think back when I was on the seven-hour, or seven-class day. But I think it will have to come down to, you know, probably teachers and administration. I know the math teachers, they, say the math teachers, you know, they want the, they want the math every day of the week and any other classroom that would require the repetition. You know, they're gonna want to go have that five-day week as opposed to every other day. But it's, I could go either way with it also. It, it's whatever teachers and administration feels to be the best learning environment for the students have to be, let's say, why.
Yeah, I was also just a seven-period type student and the reputation, repetition, I always liked. You knew when your homework was due, you wasn't counting which day was, was it red or white days? And I, I watched my kids struggle, you know, trying to get their homework done because kinda like Mac said, they'll, they just wait the extra day to do their, to do their homework. But it'd be also kinda like Jackie said though, I mean, it'd be whatever the school needs and whatever the community wants to do, you know, you'd just end up having to do.
I grew up with a seven-hour day and we had a six-day cycle. We had red and white days too. And a lot of times that would give us the extra time for our homework. It would be doing a white day or a red day, not the next day. I, I think there's, there's not gonna be a, an easy solution to every problem. But I've taught seven-hour days and I've taught blocks. And as an art teacher, I like the block because, I mean, you just don't have enough time in 50 minutes to have kids come in, get their project out, do any work, get cleaned up before that bell rings and then your right now passes because of the late. Like I said, there's no easy solution to that. There's benefits, there's, there's drawbacks. But I believe it's something that could be visited and if, if a proper cycle system or period system worked, then that would be something that would have to be probably agreed upon by most of the faculty. And of course, we'd wanna hear from the students and the students' parents as well. It's gonna benefit some classes, it's gonna take away from some others. The only problem that I might actually have with the block system is, in particular, some classes, four classes, you know, the kids are assigned homework and at least at the middle school level, I feel like if they're gonna have that much time in math, maybe they should have their math homework done during that time and not have to bring it home and say, hey dad, you're a teacher, can you help me with this? No, I had math 30 years ago, sorry. You know, I don't know how to do it now. And realistically, I, I've been there and I've had the time schedule given to me and just giving them, you know, papers to fill out or, or chapters to read still is not gonna consume that hour and a half. And I, I feel like certain classes, especially in the middle school level, if we're gonna stick to the blocks, the block schedule, that maybe they should have an allotted amount of homework time. That would alleviate some of the problems with the whole homework question. I, I don't know, there's, there's really no easy solution to that. It's something that would have to be visited. I, of course, would, would have pros and cons to that if, if I'm elected and that was an issue, we'd have to really work on that.
Thank you all. Now, I do have a few more questions on my list, but I also promised the candidates we would try to wrap up not too far after 7:30 and we are nearing that. But I would like to open it up if anybody from the floor wants to ask a question. If you do, I would ask that you come up toward the mic, may have to adjust the mic unless you're really tall. I ask you to come up to the mic, state your name, because we are streaming and we do have members to press here. State your name and then ask your question. Does anybody have any questions?
Come on, you know you do. You call me and message me on Facebook.
Is everyone overwhelmed by the excitement of being here? Just speechless.
Hey, Jackie, your last question. Oh.
Okay. I do have a question that kind of is similar. This is another thing you hear a lot about at the coffee shop, but I don't know how it will translate here. What do you think of senior projects? Do you think it's a good thing? Do you think it's not a good thing? Does that mean to be changed or kept? What's your opinion?
Big senior project question. Personally, I, I can see both sides of it. I know some kids who the thought of presenting to a group of people absolutely just terrifies them. So I see that side of it. I also see the side of it though, that this gives them such experience for later in life as they, as they go down the road to, to learn how to put that together, to get up and talk in front of a group, to have the confidence to get up and do that, to learn how to work through a project. You know, these senior projects aren't things that they can do, you know, overnight. They shouldn't be anyway. It should take them weeks or months to, to, to do their senior project. And so the planning process, learning how to start here and end up here and make it on time. You know, all of those things are skills that they're going to need as they go into college. You know, when you're in college, they give you a syllabus beginning of the class and sometimes that's the only real definition of what you have to get done. And you gotta learn to follow that. You gotta learn in a job somewhere down the road that, okay, my boss wants me to do this, I gotta take these steps to get there. And if I don't do it in a timely manner, then I'm not gonna get done in time to turn this into my boss. Those kind of skills, I think, they gain through the senior project that they would never gain any other way in school for the most part. So I see a lot of, a lot of benefit to it. I also see the stuff like I mentioned with the kids that really have, I mean, I know, you know, one in particular that just has absolute complete fear. And so, you know, I think one of the things that maybe we need to do is just modify the senior project system so that for those kids that truly, truly, truly have that fear, we give them another, another way to complete that senior project and still complete it in a way that is as difficult as the other kids' project, but yet, you know, those are kids that aren't gonna be ready for school board and sitting up in front of an audience of people answering questions. There are, there are kids that are gonna go and do a good job, but they're not gonna be up in front of people. So I think maybe by catering senior projects a little bit more to their personality and what their, their life looks like it's gonna be after school maybe. I, I don't think I really answered whether I'm for or against. I think it's a great project. I think it's a great thing. I think we just gotta make sure that we're taking care of our students in a way that makes sense for them.
Is there any other questions? You know, the senior projects, I, I've been involved with that a little bit, been on the school board for the last three years. And one of those last year, my son did a senior project. The apple did not fall far from the tree when being a student between me and my child. But I will say this about the senior project. Other than basketball and golf, I think it was the greatest thing that child had ever done was his senior project. Of course, the fact that the kids I was close to anyway, but at least his time, you know, he had outstanding senior project, he can did a great senior project. Hunter Frederick, you know, just these kids that I got to coach and they're a little bit tough. Seeing them up there and presenting and acting like adults was, it was outstanding. So I would always be a proponent for the senior project. Whether that should be a graduation requirement or not, I'm sure that's always going to be a debate because that's what I've been hearing about. But, you know, at some point in life, these kids are going to have to learn. When you show up to work and they tell you to do something, you have to do that. Or you, you know, there is a consequence for that. Senior projects are the same way. You know, they have guidelines from the first day of the school, the senior year, until the April when they get done. And they have to follow those. And I know there's kids that don't want to do that. I am just positively sure in the year of 1990, there would have been a, well, I won't say it, but, you know, it would have been a horrible experience for my parents and my teachers and me. Because I would not have wanted to have gone up there and done that either. Of course, you know, now, look at me 30 years later, I won't hardly shut up when given my. You know, kids do change over time, but, you know, I think it does prepare them. You know, one big thing that was questioned to me about the senior projects, well, the senior projects don't prepare you for college. Well, of course, they don't. You know, kindergarten through 12th grade prepares you for college. Your teachers that you have every day prepares you for college. Your senior project just kind of gives you an idea of what your college and your careers and even trade school, you know, what everything is going to be like, was following direction and doing what needs to be done. So, I am just a very big advocate for the senior project.
When my, when my son was a senior and he was telling me about senior project, he was, he wrote a play and I was so proud of him. And to see him present and to see everyone before and after him present their senior project, you could just see the excitement in their eyes. And I, I think it's a great thing. I mean, it's, not everybody wants to do that in life. And if I would have done a senior project, I might have done a little better up in front speaking with people. I mean, I'm a thinker and a doer. And it may have helped me. So, yeah, I still, I support it.
I think I only missed one year since I've been here judging senior projects. And I thoroughly enjoy that. Does that mean I think that they should be continued for some students? Yes, because some will fall into that. That's something they want to do, that's something that they're excited about. Do I think there should be another option for those that absolutely do not want to do it? Yes, I believe there should be. And perhaps a research paper, perhaps a presentation in front of their class instead of complete adult strangers that may have nervous. It would take a lot of artistic ability to put something together that would be of equal magnitude and that could be graded and, you know, used for credit. But I feel like judging over the past seven years, there are some kids that are completely unprepared and just absolutely frightened out of their minds. And I'm not sure if we should force all of them into that position. You know, some of them just do great. Some of them are nervous as heck and they get up there and then they still do good. And then they're proud of themselves. And that's great. And I enjoy it, I really do. But I really feel like there should be another option for those students that don't excel, that have absolutely no interest in going to college. Maybe they want to take over the family business. Maybe they want to just get into agriculture, logging, whatever. We're going to have different levels of students that are going to excel in that area and some that it's not going to benefit them at all. If anything, it might damage them a little. And that's coming from the students themselves. Because a lot of these seniors, they are my clients. And they talk to me when they're in my studio. And that's exactly what I hear. You know, some of them love it, some of them are proud of it. And a lot of them are completely petrified and feel like they're bullied into it. So, I think that could be visited, I think it could be adjusted. I think there could be some changes made. I don't think it should just be gotten rid of. I personally like it. And I would hope that my kids would, would elect to do that at that level. But it's something, it's something really that probably should be visited in the near future. And possibly, the mentorships should be monitored a little bit better. Not all of the kids always have a good mentor. Sometimes the mentor's not there. Sometimes the buck gets passed on to the wrong person. And there's some trouble there too. So, monitoring it and maybe modifying it would be the best thing.
I've been somewhat involved with senior projects since we began. And I've seen a lot of very, very positive outcomes from it. Clear for, as everyone knows, there's those students who are petrified I would have been when I was a senior to get up in front of the group like that. But by and large, I've seen very, very positive outcomes from the senior projects. I've had many, many students come back from the first year of college and say, "The senior project was the best thing that helped prepare me for college." Not everything, like Pearl said, it takes a total education to prepare you. But they do things in that senior project that they're going to be asked to do in any of the college classes. Not just college, though. Whenever you get out there in the real world, there's, there's a lot of the same type of skills that are required that they look for in the senior project. I too think that, and I'm sure that Marty and faculty are constantly evaluating and will look at senior projects after the year and say, "Are they accomplishing what we want them to accomplish? Is there something we could do different?" And perhaps there are other, other options out there for some students. But I also know that if you talk to students two months before the project, they're, you know, trying to meet deadlines and they're being pushed and they're not happy about it. And they're dreading getting up in front of people and presenting. But whenever you talk to students afterwards, it's a totally different scene. There are, almost every one of them are extremely, you know, proud of themselves and they're giving each other high fives. And I just see a lot of good stuff come out of it. So, I'm a fan of senior projects. I think it's one of the strengths of our hospital.
Thank you all. I'll give our audience one last chance. Does anybody have a question to ask before we kind of wrap it up for the evening?
I just wondered, any of the candidates have any ties to the school, be it family or whatever, that would keep you from voting on our mission?
I'm on the sub-list, so I'd have to remove myself from the sub-list if I didn't want to. My dad's a bus driver.
I wouldn't be able to sit and drive a bus anymore, so we'd all be afraid of sacrifice.
I do have the members in this system. All right, I have one last question that I think we will kind of work into our closing statements for the evening. And I'll give you all however, you know, comments or whatever. What do you see as the role of a school board member? Let's sink in for just a minute and it's Pearl's turn to respond again.
Our role as a school board member, you know, we're not, we're there to be a voting delegate. Of course, the superintendent is over all the faculty. You know, we hire the superintendent and, excuse you. And, but we vote on a budget every year. And we monitor the budget. We vote on capital improvements, purchasing of the equipment, buses, et cetera, implementing programs into the school. That's, it just goes on a bit time. But, I'm sorry, I've got this work to get to in my throat. You're just going to have to give me a second. But our, the roles of the school board member, yeah. There's just so much, I don't know if I can squeeze that in there. But, you know, it's a big responsibility. I think some people go into that thinking, you know, well, we're going to hire this teacher and we're going to, you know, do this with that teacher and blah, blah, blah. But, you know, we're kind of there as just a voting delegate for the people, to represent the people and make the best decisions, you know, under their influence a little bit. But mostly, you know, they voted us in for a three-year term to make those decisions for them.
Yeah, a school board member is to make the rules and policies and take the visions of the community and build the policies to make school work. And, you know, to oversee the superintendent and give him, give him the plans and then he comes back with the plans. There was a lot to it, you know, you got the buses, you got the budget, just like Pearl said. And you just have to make.
Make it all work. See, I don't personally know the entire role of a school board member because I'm not there for closed session. But just from observing what I have, it's to serve the public first and foremost, make sure that our kids get the best education that they deserve, that they need, make sure that the school is spending money properly and aiming our kids in the right direction, et cetera, for the future. But I believe that we're also there collectively as a board. You know, we would all have to work together. I mean, you're not going to get anything if you don't get a majority vote. And arguing, fighting, that's not going to help anybody. So, basically, you have to kind of work together to govern what happens through the school system with the faculty, with the administration, the budget, and, you know, endless, endless things that I've learned through some of the two- and three-hour meetings that I've sat through. Sorry, you guys, if you haven't stayed later than that. But I think collectively as a board, it's being part of that board, not just an individual board member. We have to work together. We got to do what's best for the kids and what's best for the school as a whole.
I think these guys have said it very well. You know, one of the first considerations whenever I considered running for the school board was if I'm willing to sacrifice that amount of time which is required. Because I do understand that there's a tremendous amount of time required to educate yourself and to take part in all the decisions. We've got to remember, you know, board members are elected officials and they represent the community, the constituency. As Keith said, they're implementing the vision of the community. And then through setting policy, establishing policies, senior class policies are followed, policies that are directed toward providing the best education possible and, you know, within guidelines and laws that are established. And as Mike said, working together to accomplish those goals. You know, nobody's going to get on the board and do things by themselves. It's going to probably be more harm than good and that. And but being willing to hear other people and to hear other ideas and to work together towards achieving the common goal.
I'll agree with what I'm hearing to my right for the most part. I believe that the role of a board member is to do their homework. You know, if we're working on this or that, to do your homework into whatever that subject is or whatever that law is that we're talking about or changes that we want to make to the school. Do your homework, get in there and figure out what are other people experiencing in other school districts that are trying to do this? What's it look like there? What will it look like here? Doing your homework with the community. You know, it's not just enough to look at, you know, textbook information, but find out what, what people in the community are wanting, what the students want, what the teachers want, what the administration wants, what's going to work for us. And then to come together as a board and remember that you're only one person. You know, if we were the board right here and we all had five different opinions, we're never going to get anywhere voting against each other. And so, to learn how to work together as a team, that team effort is so important on a board. You can't, you know, you don't have a basketball team that has five stars, you know, all doing their own thing. They've got to work together as a team to win that game. And that's the same thing with a board. They've got to all work together to achieve the goals that they have as a board. I think that's where it comes into really, really important for them to goal set together. What are our goals for this year? And then to work together to achieve those goals. And I think teamwork is just a huge piece of it. And remembering that we're only one person on that board member on there. And I think it's important for us to remind the community and the people that come to you also that you are just one member of that board.
Thank you. I will give the audience one more chance. Does anyone have a question that has come up that we have not asked? I would like to thank each of you again for coming, for being part of this. I would like to thank everyone for attending. I appreciate having so many candidates for the board. I encourage everybody to go out and vote. Thank you all for coming.